So I will bring Brian and Liz up tonight for to join the board for this evening. If you would like. Well, we can't really vote until they join because we don't have a quorum. So I'm using the shall powers. To appoint people this evening. You can, no, just say the chair.
It's just the chairperson's action. The power to do.
The chair appointed.
Okay. And maybe stuff will be here in a bit. Okay. We don't actually. So tonight we have a public hearing for three chapters of the master plan, which you all should have copies of. We have vision, transportation, and housing. The vision and transportation chapters were drafted last year. We've had a couple of meetings on them. But we never formally adopted them. So. And we have comments from Glenn.
Hey, she's here.
You're safe.
Yeah.
And the roads were okay with you?
Yeah, they're okay.
Well, they sanded 111A. Or salted it. They sanded and salted 111A.
I skidded coming down the hill in front of the at the bend.
Wow, really?
What, and I, I never go fast.
Yeah, right.
I, I literally do. I put on cruise control. Because I'm tired of the cops who are very friendly telling me to slow down.
Nice. Okay, let's start with the transportation chapter. And Glenn, you had a number of comments. About problems with numbers. And. So. Are any of these things that you think can't be edited? Like, do we need additional information?
No, all of them, I believe, can be edited. Because quite frankly, like, the ones where you're not coming up to the right number, just round. Just don't put, don't put numbers in that don't match up. You know, and it's as easy as that. Because you don't want somebody adding up the numbers and not having them match and then just think, I'm not going to read any further because it aggravates me.
Okay, so that's that, table one. Table two?
Yeah. Just, they put in table two, which is the list of bridges that don't have any problems. So.
With no.
But if you're gonna put in a table, it's really incumbent upon you to give it some context. And if the ta- if it's just to say, you know, there are however many, fourteen bridges in town, as you can see from table two. Thirteen of them are just fine as far, as far as the state's perspective on safety of bridges. And then there's one poor one, and that's indicated on table two or table three.
That's what these are on the housing. I just added a sentence or two to it, like.
Context. That, that's my major problem with all three chapters. Is there's a lot of good information here, and in many instances, there needs to be context. To tell you what they're saying they're telling you because they're not really telling you.
I'm not sure I fully understand that. So like, looking at map one and table one. What context is there other than these are the roads in Brentwood? You're listening for?
I don't think that I had a problem with that.
Okay. What did you have? You had some problem?
I had a problem with table two. If you go to table two.
Table two?
No, I'm, yeah, table two.
Page four.
On page four. So it's just a table.
Okay.
Now, what the table is, is stated in the table. But if you're gonna put a table in, there should be some context about what that table is.
But it says, okay.
And in this, it says, wait, this is for table three. They're actually giving you some context for table three.
I used it for both of them.
And, and it, it just doesn't make sense not to have at least one statement about what the table is you've offered. Just to guide the reader as to what you're doing.
If we make changes to this tonight, can we not adopt it?
No, actually, the statute for master plan chapters says that at the public hearing, if there is consensus about additions. You simply say, we'd like to, someone makes a motion to adopt the master plan chapter as it's been amended at the public hearing.
Great.
Yeah. It's much different than when you're looking at a zoning ordinance in a public hearing. Any substantive changes, you have to have another hearing.
So what is that sentence gonna say?
I thought it would say something like. To cover both chapters, I mean, both tables, say something like, there are, I'd count up the number of table, the number of bridges. And say, there are fourteen bridges in the town of Brentwood. Thirteen of them, as seen on table two, show that there are no safety deficiencies according to the state of New Hampshire.
So you'd, you'd get rid of this other paragraph entirely, or you'd leave that?
I'd probably get rid of that. I'd, I'd men, I'd merge the information from this with information that also details chapter number, I mean, table number two.
Is this document meant for the average layperson or not?
It absolutely is geared for the, a person who comes to town, actually. It's often given out as an introduction to, to the town by some town.
Would you be willing to leave this paragraph after your paragraph? Because it does kind of explain what, like, really.
Yeah, all, all I want is there not to be a table that isn't referenced at all in the text.
What's that sentence? So do we literally have to approve the actual wording?
I'm thinking that this is kind of like conditional approval, where we have Glenn's comments, and we can say, we approve this chapter with the recommendations in Glenn's comments. That's what I was thinking.
But it has a sentence here. Red list bridges are. And if you look, there are no reds except for the table three, which is a bridge that's already been repaired. Is that gonna be eliminated?
What do you mean, the bridge has already been repaired?
Table three, municipal bridge, red list.
That has not, has it been fully?
I think all they did was put in like.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think it's done.
They did put a bit of work down there, didn't they? I, I don't know.
They, they did some work, but I didn't, it didn't seem like they.
I couldn't say. But if it has been repaired, that shouldn't be there.
Sure.
It, but it would have to come off the red bridge list in order to not, I, I would say, not have some kind of conversation about it.
Okay, whatever. I'm just saying.
So I, I, I mean, I don't, I do know they did work there, but.
Yeah. I don't know if it's a permanent fix or not. I have no idea.
Glenn, is 111 not a state road?
It is a state road.
It is a state road.
Not 111A, 111.
111's not in Brentwood.
111 is South Road. Or Kingston Road, whatever they call it.
No, Kingston Road is 111.
111 goes from the top of the hill all the way down to the first light at itself after, after Metal Road.
Right. South Road is not 111. 111 where, you know, when you come off Great Hill Inn? It's really a, South Road hits 111. But the part of South Road that hits 111 is actually in Kingston.
Okay, so what is?
Down by the vet.
South Road is just South Road.
It's just a state.
Just a town road.
Just a town road.
There's a vet place right there where.
Yeah.
Where it is.
Okay, um, hold on. I, I'm now just getting caught up. I think that this might be correct because we don't know if the private roads are paved or not.
They, they say.
What page are you on?
I'm on the, his second thing about paved roads, and then. There's a table one, and then there's a.
What page?
Somewhere. I don't know anymore.
It's down in the right-hand corner.
They show.
I think it's number one, and then on map two, they talk about paved roads.
Correct.
Yes.
And they say, class six unpaved. And they say, class zero five, just class zero, private roads. And that's how they come up with their first. Mileage number. And, and then on the following one, they say surface type, and they also say unpaved, and they say paved. And I can only assume from looking at this that the unpaved ones are the ones they're declaring are class six unpaved.
Right, but. We don't know if any of the private roads are paved or not, which could account for the point four mile difference between the two places.
But does it count as a paved road if the town hasn't accepted it?
Yes, because it's still paved.
Yeah, the, the, the statement is about paved as opposed to unpaved.
Right, but the town's not responsible for it.
No, that's not what, but that's not what the, the text is talking about. I, I want there not to be two figures reflecting paved and unpaved that don't match.
But they, I'm saying that there aren't.
So if point four miles of the private roads are paved. Then that sixty point six is correct.
That's what I'm saying. I mean, yeah, it's not clear.
It's not clear.
It isn't clear.
I agree that it's not clear, but I don't know that it's necessarily wrong unless I know where they got their information.
Well, then I think what I would do is ask our. Highway department.
I don't, nope, I don't think that's a good idea because then you'll hear a lot about sand and salt.
No, that's not true. If I ask them a question about the paved surface in town.
How about this?
I bet he'll know.
How about if, instead of that, as a compromise, which is also gonna be accurate, Brentwood owns. Or Brentwood is responsible for about sixty point two miles of paved roads.
Sixty point two miles of public.
Well, my, my fault, my soul for this is to just say approximately sixty miles.
Oh, that, yes.
Because there's no reason to say point six.
Great, done, done.
They said, because they used the word about. About sixty point six isn't an about. That seems pretty definite. So you just say about sixty, and you're golden.
Why didn't you stop me? Why didn't you stop me like ten minutes ago?
I'm sorry, because I wasn't really hearing what you were saying.
No, that's okay. All right, let's go through these, see if there's any other, any others that are problematic or that we have questions about. I agree on the order of five and six. It says bike and pedestrian, then it says pedestrian and bike. Strava is a, it's an app.
It is a fitness app.
It is a fitness app, when I know it's used for data collection.
And so apparently you can subscribe to it. And you can get information about road, any roads that get used.
And you can provide information, which is, I think, how they get a lot of it, right?
People put in their.
Well, people put in their, I, the only way I can see they've used this is they've gone on and they've done a check of what the usage is by pedestrians and bicyclists.
There should be a citation.
There has to be a description because there's nothing.
Footnote, but no.
I, I want Starva to be defined.
So could we do that as a footnote?
Yeah, oh, absolutely.
Just saying pretty much what you said, that.
Using information found from a subscription fitness app, we have some. Idea of the usage, because this, there's nothing statistically valid about. The information that Starva offered. Exactly.
Could we just say that, like?
That's exactly what I want to say.
This information is voluntarily provided by.
Not statistically insignificant.
Not guaranteed to be proven or accurate.
It's lim, it's limited.
Yeah, it's, it's limited anecdotal information supplied by users.
Yep.
There you go. Great. Okay.
Because everywhere else throughout the chapter, if it's like from DOT, they say, information provided by NHDOT. Well, people are very comfortable with that, or if it's from the US Census.
Even that's a little.
Is it possible that people who are not us are comfortable with Strat?
I've never seen it before.
Well, but that doesn't mean that many people under the age of forty don't know like this.
Well, I've worked on a lot of transportation chapters.
Doug, Doug has a thought?
Well, so I, I don't want to jump ahead too much because I, I had some notes around like page seven, eight, in that ballpark. Should we, should I hold off or?
No, go ahead.
So I, I don't know if, if this is even necessarily appropriate for this document, if I wanted to raise it. Going through, so they identified, you know, dangerous intersections in Brentwood, including South and 125. And I was looking through, and, and there aren't any updates to reflect like, you know, what we've accomplished so far in terms of the interim solution, putting in the turn-in lane, and then also the RPC approved. You know, as a, as a top prior, as the top priority, the, the additional projects in South and 125.
Absolutely, both those things should be added.
Yeah. Because I, I just feel like if this is a public-facing document, especially people who will want to come into the community, it's valuable for them to know what work is happening. What work has already been done and what work is happening that's gonna mitigate this problem.
No, just identify this danger.
Exactly.
This effort's moving forward to make them updated.
Exactly.
Where would that, oh, would that be intersection section, page seven?
It could be intersections because they, they talk about cra- yeah, intersections, because that's right after crash data and stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah. Especially since Doug Finn is not here, I want to make sure to raise that for, for both of us. And also for Mark, who I know worked so hard on that as well. So many people, but especially Mark and Doug Finn.
That's another good point.
Yeah, this is the problem with us taking so long approving this, is that the data is.
No, 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 they don't have data after 2020. Like, they just haven't collected it.
But the motorcycle crash, we're down taking the one after that.
Right.
Yep.
That's a great point.
Yeah.
How would we feel about trying to keep all of the same information about something on the same page?
That's often harder to do.
So like, the intersections roll over to the next page, and by the time I get to that page, I'm already looking at bikes. The level of stress. Rolls over to the next page, which, by the way, I don't agree with these at all.
I mean, it's pretty, it, it's, it's. There are ways to do that. There's, because there's a lot of white space on this page. You know, that's a, this is a very big bottom margin of the page on it. So you could, you could work at that, but it's still, you're never, ever gonna be able to keep everything, every topic on one page.
Maybe even if there's room to add like some footnotes or something, if, if, if appropriate.
Yeah, and then you want the maps to still be readable.
That's true, too.
Okay.
Pine and Middle is dangerous intersection, I'd say.
Yeah. It is.
Yeah, it, it is, and it's because.
Is that the one where the T used to be?
No, it's the one. It's, no, Pine and Middle is the one where people crash into that fence all the time. No. Middle, it's right before Pickpocket on the opposite side.
The commercial industrial road.
Where there's tons of trucks that don't know. Yeah, Pine and Middle.
Okay.
Not Pickpocket.
Okay. Page eleven, misinformation, they'll fix that.
Hold on. Sorry, I, sorry. That road is mentioned, that intersection is mentioned twice. Because once it's mentioned as Middle Road, and once it's mentioned as 111A.
Intersection of Pine Road and 111A.
And Middle and.
That's on page seven.
So Pine Road and Middle Road. Have been identified as dangerous intersections in Brentwood based on the hotspot analysis. And then the other is those mentioned by the master plan survey.
By people.
So you could, you could say. Here parenthetically, also mentioned.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm saying. I, I want to identify that those are the same intersections. Even though it's in two different surveys.
Also mentioned.
They're not all the same, but two, two of them are. Well, South, South and 125. And Pine and 111A.
Just, just putting comma or parentheses 111A and mimicking that on the other one, I think. Talk to me about level of stress. Do we really need that? Because I don't think it's accurate.
Well, it's.
On page nine, and then page 10.
The level of stress section.
I just, I think. If somebody's wondering if they should ride their bike along 125 or Middle Road. No, you should not. No, you should not. No, but like, three doesn't feel like it's, three doesn't feel like it's giving you, like.
But this is a, this is a New Hampshire DOT.
It is, and it's.
However, that being said, I know this is very public.
Yeah, and I guess what I'm saying is even between 125 and Middle Road, calling those the same level of danger. I understand that.
The, the weakness is that. I think there's a real disconnect, but if you're thinking about level of stress. If you're thinking about your kids riding on these, or if you're thinking of adults who bike a lot riding on these. Because bicyclists, cyclists have a much different level of stress. Than, yes, than someone who's thinking, oh, I'm gonna go for a ride on Middle Road, and I'm doing it in my cutoffs, and. It's a different, it's a different end user.
Yes.
And the end user for the stress work that NHDOT is, is, I believe, surveys with people who cycle a lot.
I don't know, I guess I just don't, I, I don't understand why 101 is so much worse than 125.
I, I feel like, to me, 125 should be a four. I don't, these are based on surveys, did they say?
I believe that that is the way DOT gets their stress information.
I, I mean, the only four on this map is that little section of 107, which, like, why is that worse than 125?
I know, yeah, it seems like.
Is it? Well, is it? But is it? Is that where the DOT gets their information?
No, it is not. It is not.
Whatever. We'll leave it because it's not our data.
Yeah, we don't have control over that.
We can put, so it says, this measure can help us understand the overall comfort of a roadway, and put, but it is limited by DOT's methodology. Drive the road before you.
Yeah, I could just, we could just add more description of how this.
This is not a recommendation.
Right, and so this isn't, you know. You're not asking a, a ten-year-old who's asking their parents to ride their bike on Middle Road. This is, this is asked of people who are actually very experienced cyclists, for the most part.
Exercise your common sense.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, there's a typo on page nine. And that, it's talking about pedestrian usage, and then at the end it says trail bike usage. I was just saying, probably a copy and paste error. Where are you looking? I, I'm trying to understand why there's trail bikes on the pedestrian usage chart. It's because they just copied and pasted the bike usage one?
Well, no, because trail bikes are more frequently actually used on, oh, but this is just roads.
Right, so this one, literally, they just copied and pasted.
We don't have any places where they can only go trail bike.
That's the way I, I read it, is that, so on the bike usage one, there's roads, and then there's trails.
No, no, but.
And same with pedestrian.
Don't need bike usage on a pedestrian chart.
So trail usage?
Yes. Trail pedestrian usage?
It's just out of place.
I think they just copied, I think they just forgot to change this one.
Yeah.
The name of this one.
No, because it's showing a different value.
Right, because the value, the top value and the trail value for both is the same. They just forgot to change the label of this one from bike to pedestrian, is my take.
Yeah, that makes sense to me.
No, no, there's a whole different chart for bike.
I was thinking they might be saying these are bike trails that pedestrians are using, but that is probably not useful. So we'll just cross out. Well, I.
I think we need to change it to trail pedestrian usage.
Yeah. Why don't you just leave off the bike, so whatever it is, it's trail.
Sure. Is what I'm saying making sense?
I'm, I'm just not sure why they include, I'm, I'm thinking that there's a reason that they chose to include it, and I'm not sure where.
I'm assuming because they want to include trails as something that pedestrians use.
But that wouldn't, that wouldn't have anything to do with the transportation.
No, it, oh, no, pedestrian, the mode of pedestrian travel is definitely transportation.
No, but I mean on a trail.
So you're saying remove.
I'm saying where it says trail bike usage, change it to trail pedestrian usage.
Just remove the whole thing.
Then they have to change the map.
Might not be able to. Might have to just black it out. Because it's a foot.
Wait, can you just not mention the trail bike usage as a number, and put a thing down there saying trails? And then they'll see the dotted stuff.
Doesn't have to have the bike.
You won't make any, any response as far as the standing of it. It's just that it exists and there.
It is currently incorrect. We will figure out a way to make it correct.
We don't know if it's incorrect.
It is, because it doesn't.
Zooming is incorrect.
No, it, it's, it's a typo. We'll figure out how to fix it.
But there's quite a few places there to have that dotted green line.
Or I just may be able to get Robert to send me a new PDF.
Oh, I can for sure get him to do that.
So if, if that's the case, if I can't manipulate this at all, I'll ask Robert.
Just to remove the five nine.
I'm sorry, you called him Robert?
The math guy.
You call him Rob?
Oh, okay. Well, you're better friends with him than I am.
All right. Paragraph on lighting and noise on page twelve, oh, page eleven, says all development reviewed. We already talked about that, okay. Lighting and noise, confusing, seems to have just.
Yeah, they're, they just, they're, they're putting a statement that seems, I think what they're trying to say is that both concepts were discussed in the.
The survey.
In the survey. That some people found more lighting on the roadways would be a good thing from a safety aspect, and others thought that. More lighting would be detrimental to protection of dark skies. But they don't really say it very clearly, so I suggested that we.
Actually, I complained about blinding light along 125 on my survey as a driver.
There's no, you can drive up the road where there is no lights at all, and you can see whatever's in your headlights. If you introduce exterior lights, not headlights, now you gotta deal with something else. I never have a problem driving if there's no lights on the side. It's when they have lights on, on the side. They blind me and I can't see.
The security lights that they added that point straight out. Security lights that they added that point straight out. There's a couple places, one twenty-five and south. Yep, you drive up to the intersection, you can't see a thing. Right in your eyes.
That could be an individual thing, but it would bother me.
Anyways, that's my, it's on my list of. So, um.
So I, it should just be made more clear. So I'll add the concepts you just.
Break those two, three, three concepts apart, okay. That, and that's a set, that could even be a paragraph, like a little paragraph return in there.
Have, have, is noise a big problem with driving? I mean, we had the noise along one twenty-five when they were grounding up rocks, but that didn't seem to be a driving thing. That seemed to be a residential thing.
Yeah, I think this is a residential thing too, cause we remember we did the community survey at the same time they were doing this, so they pulled out. So some people made comments about road noise from trucks.
Oh, road noise from trucks, okay, I was thinking about the business.
Um, first action item.
I wasn't sure what they were trying to say here, but if anyone else can make clear what they're trying to say. I just think that if we're gonna talk about the capital improvements program, then the responsible parties has to include the planning board since you're responsible for. Doing the C I P, so you can't make changes to the C I P without including all the responsible parties.
Is the planning board responsible for the identification or the adoption?
Well, in the town of Brentwood, the preparation of.
Is that, uh, okay. I mean, this just says identify and so I guess, yeah, so add planning board. And, uh, if you're gonna do that, I would also say, uh, department heads.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's a good addition.
Because the budget committee also. I mean, the budget committee and the select board received the document that department heads and planning board generate.
So are you saying that everywhere? Are you on page twelve?
I'm on page twelve, just T one one.
Just that when they're talking about the C I P.
So I would either add those two and leave the two that are here, or add those two and take these two away.
I think you'd add them. I think you keep all four because they're all responsible parties.
On both T one one and T one two?
Just T one.
Nope.
Nope.
No, because the T one two isn't referring to the planning, to the C I P.
All right, T two two, um, complete streets.
Yeah, I mean, the complete streets, um, program is a great program. If you're gonna talk about, uh, um.
Wait, wait, excuse me. How did we get from T one one to T two two?
I'm going through. Cause there's nothing in between.
There, I, I, I just had, I had no problems with.
Okay.
We can, yeah, we'll.
I'm not, but if anybody else had problems, you absolutely.
We'll go back, sorry, I'm, I'm going through Glenn's comments.
Okay, T two two?
T two two. My comment is, if you're going to have a goal that talks about the complete stro, the complete streets. Program, which is a great program, it should be discussed in the body of the chapter. Um, it, there should be at least a paragraph talking about what the program is and what it involves, especially for a public facing. It does, but that's not the place for the goal. I mean, the goal shouldn't be describing the program. So we should, we should include a section in the main body that talks about the complete street program. And then say in the goals that. Using that program in places in town is a good idea.
Okay, so if we wanted to learn about this complete streets program, where do we find? I'm sorry, I don't get that.
I mean, I will, I will prepare a section for the main body of the text.
Okay.
That describes the complete streets program.
That would be.
Cause it's a really good program.
So we have introduction, existing conditions, it probably should number these two. Transportation and land use.
Sorry, I had one other question, um, unless I just totally missed it. Is, is there a reason why on T two two, there's an asterisk next, next to planning board?
They've done it in several places throughout the document.
Yeah, but I don't see any references to what the asterisk means. Oh, oh terrific, fantastic. Well, we, we don't know.
In some instances, in, in the responsible parties column, if the planning board is there, they put an asterisk. But there is nothing in the document that says, oh, this is what we mean.
So let's just take.
I think that's my fault. You know what happened is I think there was a little thing that said. What the planning board should do, like.
Oh, so you wanted to call attention to it with an asterisk?
Gotcha, okay. I was, I was so confused, I was so confused, I was like.
Lose that asterisk.
I was, I was like, are we responsible or not? We're responsible.
Well, this is just advisory.
So you'd put that under transportation and land.
Yeah, I, I would, it would not be another, um.
A little section.
Another little section, yes.
For the complete street, for the complete streets.
Complete streets would go in the transportation and land use section as another individual.
Makes a lot of sense.
Okay. And you're gonna send us that info, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're going to look at this again.
Okay, I thought we had to vote on it.
I mean.
Um, other comments.
Um, I thought, so are we taking the entire entirety of T two two out or not?
No, if, if people are comfortable with what T two two says. Then it really would become just consider adopting a complete streets policy for certain areas of town to ensure roadways, just that first sentence.
We can say we considered and we don't want.
And there would have been a section in the, in the body of the thing that described what complete street policy was.
Okay, I just feel like if, the next couple are somewhat repetitive then. Because if they're talking like widened shoulders, bike lanes, sidewalks, that's, seems like a similar. It's not, I don't know.
Um, there are, um, traffic calming is definitely, uh, um. One of the things that is advocated in, um, in complete streets, yes.
But you can't, we're not gonna be able to convince a state to provide all this, uh, extra traffic space on each side of the road. For bikes, pedestrians, et cetera.
Well, you can't, um, you can't say you can't unless you ask.
The, the state is really favoring complete streets policy.
Yeah, I, I mean.
It's like.
Have they?
At con, yeah, I've attended some conferences where the N H G O T's been presenting on complete streets and how they want to focus.
They would take one eleven A, put six feet on each side of the road for.
I think they would probably wanna do a study first, the.
Maybe only, maybe only do sections.
Yeah, I mean, it'll be years.
Maybe only do sections, maybe do sections around the, the areas where there would be. Additional benefit of expanding the mode of transportation in that area. So if they're, so say between one twenty-five and the school, you're hitting the library and the, and.
The rec.
And, and they, they could just find areas where incorporating complete street ideas would be. Beneficial and the state would see that as true also.
It just would be frightfully expensive.
Yes, it would be. Everything about transportation.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I, I was just, I was just gonna say, I, I mean, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it's okay for. At least some of the things in here to be sort of aspirational in nature.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
No, that's not gonna happen, we're just talking about.
Well, not that's not gonna happen, but that, but that may be, it may be a long-term discussion and.
It lays out things that we can be looking at in the future so that we have, there's some planning.
Yeah, that's the kind of project that would go on the tenure plan and use federal funding or you'd get a grant. But it's unlikely the town would ever fully fund a project like that.
Well, I mean, there was a time when I used to run and I would, I'd run down one eleven A, oh, yeah, one eleven A, all the way over to one oh seven. And then I'd come back around another way, but, but now with the increased traffic, probably five times as much. Or six times, ten times as much traffic now, you gotta be careful and you gotta be willing to dodge off to the side of the road. And hope you don't get whacked. No, you could go out one way and come back the same road.
Yes, um, other edits? Change of suggestions. All right. So Glenn, you will work on the edits?
I will.
All right.
Do we need to vote on it or no?
Can I make a motion to accept it with the edits that were discussed?
Can do that.
I'll second, I'll second that motion.
Any additional discussion? All in favor of adopting the transportation chapter with the edits discussed this evening and in Glenn's comments, say aye.
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 Any opposed tensions? Okay. All right, um, let's talk vision.
Let's talk vision.
I'm so puzzled by the spacing here. It's like this, it's like it's, some of it seems like it's one word.
There's a lot going on in that vision.
Lot going on.
There's a lot going on.
There's a setting you can push to make it like. I know exactly what made that happen. Like there's, you know how there's like a left justify, right justify and like fill?
Yeah, because this might just be like an OCD thing, but look at Brentwood, it's like a B E R and E space in there. And then the rest of them are all together, the character.
I don't even know what program this is originally done. It's like a really, really old version of something.
Let's just focus on any, yeah, anyway, okay, comments. I was told that I would be.
Okay, page two, community vision, goal one, um, sorry, didn't mean to shout. Page two, goal one point five, consider revisions, review land research. As needed. Okay, I'm. Fine with that. And you added the select board because of enforcement?
Yes. Look at you being all over that.
Dark sky practice is just when there's not a lot of lights around, is that it?
Um, well, no, actually it's when you, um, encourage people to use light fixtures that are completely downcast. So that they're not bleeding upward.
Not to the point of removing them, just make.
Correct.
Um, on page four, community goal three.
Oh, uh, sorry, uh, before we move on to, uh, goal three, um, are the, are we, were we moving on to economic vitality? Is that where we were heading? So, so I, I was just looking at, um, uh, C V two two under community harmony. And I, I genuinely don't know the answer, I'm just curious. Does it make sense? So it says twenty twenty-four ongoing. Given that twenty twenty-four is wrapping up, should we still keep twenty twenty-four in there and make it twenty twenty-five ongoing?
Or just ongoing?
Or just ongoing, yeah.
Yeah, that's fine. There might have been one in the transportation chapter like that too.
I think there, I think you're right, I think there was.
Okay, um.
That was it.
Let's just make it ongoing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Three point two, add planning board.
Which page are we on? Four?
Four, it's on page four, yeah. We just say select board, budget committee, town department head, directors, and. We don't mention the planning board about.
Was this similar to the other one?
We're trying to get out, no.
And, and we still have a couple twenty twenty-four timeframes.
But I have a question. C V three point five?
Oh, yeah.
The select board is, as far as I know, not doing that. So I, I just wanna have. Three point five?
Yeah, economic development committee has applied for some grants and discussed that.
To them.
I think it's, we probably put select board because ultimately the select board would be the decision maker on. Approving a project like that.
Maybe we put both?
Yeah.
Select board and econ.
Yeah.
I don't want people to get the idea that the select board is.
See, that brings up a question I have. We have all this, all these things going in in town, lots more usage of the water. We also currently had a, have or had a drought. And they make a lot of assessments as to how much water there is. But if the aquifer drops real quickly. Then who's responsible? Probably, no, probably the people that made the estimate. They were wrong.
No, because they weren't wrong because they, right, because there's usually, they test these things when they say that.
Yeah, we had a big discussion with this with one of the development proposals and how much water there is.
And?
And there's a lot.
I mean, all they can do is test the current conditions. They can't forecast future.
That's what they do.
Right, but you, you, you don't, if you know, if you think you're, no, no, but think, because it's all speculation. Uh, and something goes wrong, somebody's gonna be holding the bag.
Yeah, the homeowner.
Every homeowner.
Yeah, but, yeah, but I do remember having this discussion and I thought they did some, it was current conditions, but there was also. Some projections.
But when you add sixty some odd houses.
Yeah, and what.
Across the road and then you add five, six, oh, well, thirteen houses went out in back of the niches. I mean, you're really, really, really cramping the style.
So whose speculation is right? Their speculation or your speculation?
I'm in, I'm in doubt of all the speculation because I don't think they, they really know.
Water doesn't leave planet earth.
Now we're, now we're, now we're getting out there, but.
No, and we're not getting out there. It's, it's a very valid point. When you use water and you flush your toilet, that water goes out into your septic system. Then it goes back into the earth. It just doesn't disappear, okay? So that aquifer, if you knew the figures that were thrown out about how many gallons per day could be pumped out of that aquifer, it's absolutely staggering. Staggering.
Relative to, it sounds like a lot, like seventy houses sounds like a lot, but relative to the size of the aquifer. My understanding from the people that we had testifying is it's.
My well currently goes down a hundred and twenty feet. It used to go down considerably more. And I can go over three more houses and the guy's down four hundred feet. So my take is if he still has water, I could be dry as a. It, it, that's, that's all I'm saying. I don't.
Yeah, it doesn't really work like that and I'll give you an example.
Well, I hope you're right.
My well is down two twenty and they stopped counting at twenty-five gallons a minute. Like, you don't even wanna, you don't even know after have that figure. Yeah, twenty-five gallons a minute at two hundred and twenty feet. My neighbor directly across the street had to go five hundred feet down for eight gallons a minute. So there is no rhyme or, I had it doused. I had a guy come in with sticks, dousing, not joking.
No.
Not joking.
Good idea.
Twenty-five gallons a minute, right, at two hundred and twenty feet. Next door, five hundred.
No, we're not.
We're not gonna solve this tonight, but I, I do remember having hydrogeology.
There is, there is science involved.
There is science involved.
And with a project like the Falzone project, D E S has a process for large groundwater. Withdrawals that requires a lot of testing, but it is just testing and it is impacted by drought conditions. Um, but drought conditions in the state of New Hampshire have always shown to be temporary. We're not Somalia. Maybe we'll be Somalia someday, but. Our history is that droughts are short-term in the state of New Hampshire.
And for the amount of.
Is there still a drought?
Did I do it again? The recent drought that we had before the recent rains, is that not affected?
The drought condition has not ceased from the amount of rain we've received for this drought, but this drought. Well, this last drought was just immediate drought, wasn't any. Wasn't anything like the two-year drought we had two years ago, or the six-year drought we had eight years ago. But they're all temporary in New Hampshire, we're very lucky about that.
And I think that amount of development that we've had, again, relative to the scale of what we're talking about is.
Has shown that in New Hampshire, we're particularly lucky that popping straws into our aquifers has, as of yet, become a negative equation.
But at some point, if they keep developing more and more and more, I'm just saying.
It's, it's a worse instance when you're on a system that pumps that water away, like Exeter. Exeter, your water, when you flush, doesn't go back under your property, it goes out to Great Bay by way of the wastewater treatment facility. But in Brentwood, we don't do that, it's exactly what Mark said. The, the, um, the calculation they use, and the budget they call it, the water budget, stays in Brentwood. Because we don't have that, um, infrastructure that sends it away.
There are some definite blessings for not having water.
There are, there are. Beyond the ability, that water and, water and sewer generally facilitates greater density, so if that's not what you're into, as a person, and with a personal philosophy. Then you're going to stay away from that at all, in all cases. But one of the benefits of what, of having water and sewer on your own property, is that the water budget is more a cycle. As opposed to a loss.
Just, just gotta hope you don't have any pool trucks there hauling a couple of towns over, right?
So, um, so for this one, I know economic development's talked about it, and I know they, there's been, um, grant application for researching this. I don't know what to put on for date.
Where are, where are you?
Yeah, why?
Three point five.
Unless we know of short-term things, why isn't ongoing just okay?
Yeah, I think ongoing is fine.
You know, instead of. Yeah, in, instead of saying that, that in twenty twenty-four, if nothing's done, then maybe the goal is irrelevant, that's not what we're trying to set out.
Yeah. The, let's see, years, loving in Brentwood, well, a hundred percent.
This chapter might help us get a grant.
Right, so this adds up to ninety-eight percent.
Really? But they're all exclusive, that's what I didn't understand. It's more than twenty years, ten to twenty years, less than ten years, so it should account for everybody.
Yeah.
Except it doesn't account for two percent of the population.
Must be, it must be the, the two percent who wrote in Ralph Nick.
We're just gonna say fix on that one and move on.
It is possible that two percent of the people didn't answer.
In, in which case, we really should say that, say that, that.
It's eight o'clock, everybody.
The way, the, the, the information was gathered in a way that did not allow, uh, one hundred percent, um, value. I'm just really disappointed with just having this map here.
Is that a rhetorical question?
Well, because the, 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 this document says you can go to this link.
Does that link work?
I'm, I'm assuming it does, but I'm assuming at some point, the link is not going to be on the town's website anymore.
That's not on the town website.
Oh, well, I'm assuming that's gonna become a dead link.
Oh, for sure, everything becomes a dead link.
This particular map shows that there are forty-four places that we don't like in Brentwood, and only twenty that we do. And that's a bad, that's just a bad. That doesn't represent what the survey was saying. And I just, it just doesn't offer to me, it's certainly not a great way to end the chapter.
Yeah.
That, that the town considers that there are more twice as many places we, we don't like in town that, that we do like in town.
And these were, they really, like, a lot of them are.
Yeah, so look.
Traffic and.
Look at coincidentally, South Road and one twenty-five. And we have a ton of don't like things there.
Oh, and one twenty-five, is, is this more about commercial development?
I was just gonna say, which, because there were questions about where you wanted to see increased density, there were a couple of different questions. What is this question?
The, the question that this is showing is, please locate places that you think in Brentwood need improvement, or places that you like.
So it could be commercial or really just.
Survey participants were asked to indicate on a map, locations in Brentwood they like, those are in green, in areas they think need improvement, those are in red. And provide comments as to why, and apparently those are here, I just, if, I don't, it shouldn't be this link. If we're going to have this map, I want context.
Yeah.
Yeah, cuz it could be traffic.
Because, it absolutely could be.
Yeah.
And I just don't want it to look like you look at this and, oh my god, it's all places we don't like.
It's unfortunate that the time of the survey, that intersection was a hot-button topic.
And nothing had been done.
And nothing had been done to it.
Yeah.
So that, I think that's a representation of that. I think it'd be less marks in that particular area with the recent improvements, and it being, now being on a ten-year plan for a permanent solution.
My fix is either remove it or give it context, again, what I go back to over and over again.
It's important that that context is added.
And they're giving, they're saying the context is here on this link, links.
Is it? Have you been there?
Well, links die. Links die, and then it's completely useless and frustrating.
Yes, you need to add the information of what's in that link.
If we, just a few lines that give context as to what, like, a majority of the red dots mean, will show that it's not that we're finding a lot of things we don't like about town. It's that there are specific things, and they all end up being red dots on one twenty-five.
Yeah, and that, do, and do we need a map, or do we just need, I mean, that, that shows up.
Well, the map thing is a good, it's a, it's an interesting practice, and an interesting concept to have people, um, give people the ability to locate something in their town.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a, it's a.
I think we did in the, in the economic development chapter, we had something similar, where it was like, where do you wanna see?
And I think that's a, I think that's a powerful tool, I just don't want the tool in the visioning chapter, on the back, on the last page, to be twice as many bad things as good things.
Red thumbs downs?
Yeah, I, it's just, it, it leaves, for me, it leaves a bad.
It doesn't leave you on a high note, you're not on a high note after you read that, it, it doesn't leave a positive reflection.
But don't you wonder if it's somebody's house, it needs to be done differently or something, or?
There's too many variables, yeah.
You probably have to go to the link, and it might be explained in the link.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm pulling it up now, it's taking a while to load, but.
And I'm happy to go to that link, find that context, and add that in here.
You can.
So, yeah, it, it, no, so it's in draft mode, and so you'd have to sign in to view the draft.
So that answers that question.
Well, that, that's, I definitely want to have them give me the context, information.
So, so I move that we take that out.
Right, let's take out, the link will disappear.
And the map.
Oh, oh, really?
Because there's too many, we don't know what they mean, I mean, it could be all kinds of things.
Don't, we have all the results.
We, we should, yeah, so, don't, let's, please don't remove the map unless I really can't give the map context.
Okay.
Alright, because it's a.
I move that we move.
This is a vision chapter. I mean, this is a vision chapter, and this is an exercise by the, by the public of Brentwood to provide information. That's great, that, that's a positive thing.
Yeah.
I just wanna give a context.
I think we have, we have a document with all the answers.
I believe you're absolutely right.
Um, could, could I just, uh, make sort of a parliamentary inquiry? Would it, uh, um, would it be in order if we wanted to, if the board was amenable to this? If you want to approve the rest of the vision chapter and table this specific section pending Glenn's review? And then we can, uh, and, and then we can approve the balance of, uh, the balance.
I'm, I'm fine with approving it, saying that Glenn will add context, because I'm fairly certain we have all the comments.
Yeah, and, and it is just, it's a context issue.
No, but he can, he can be that.
I wanna be able to just contextualize the red and green.
Is that really a word?
Contextualize?
Yeah.
I don't make the words, I promise.
I think, you know, for the.
I can live with.
The, the, um, it's probably gonna be easy to explain the ones along.
One twenty-five, right?
And twenty-seven, I guess, but it might be good if you can find the comments on why there's negative comments on, you know, Salt Rock and.
Yeah, it's, it's all, it's. It's all, it's all an issue of context.
I just say lots of ticks, you know, no, it's not me, I don't know how it got on there that it's a dog park, though, it comes up as a dog park.
That wasn't me, but I do take my dog.
That wasn't me.
Most of the dogs end up in my yard.
So that was, was there a motion, uh, passage to adopt this with comments and?
I heard Doug make a motion, and I will second it.
Well, Doug was to wait.
Yeah, well, well, so, so my preferred motion, and again, people can feel free to vote no if you don't like this approach, it's totally fine, but my motion is that we approve, um, the, the vision chap. The, the vision chapter with the exception of, uh, let's see, um, with the exception of. Do you adjust the map or do the whole summary of funding?
Just do the whole section.
Yeah, so, so, yeah, so, so, yeah, so my motion is to approve the vision chapter with the exception of the bottom of page seven where it begins, survey participants, uh, were asked to indicate on a map, and then the subsequent map.
Second.
And, and then I'll have a follow-up motion after that.
Were you gonna do anything with, uh, page five and the missing two percent?
My, so.
Yeah, yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna add a note to that.
So, so discussion on the motion, my, my only concern is that we have already put this off for so long. That I, that I would prefer that we get it done tonight, knowing that it needs some editing, but I trust that Glenn will sort that out with the data that we have. But other discussion.
Can we not add that section back later?
We would have to have another public hearing and vote on it, and a public hearing would be my.
I mean, we have public hearings not.
Well, so just for the context, so, uh, hypothetically, if this motion were to pass, my follow-up motion would then be to table the, the balance of the documents. And then we can remove it from the table when we're ready and pass it, so that's my intention, just for context.
To add, to add that in later.
So would they need a public hearing for that?
Yeah, I have a procedural question for Glenn. After this public hearing, can you turn this into a public meeting and make changes and adopt? Or is that not appropriate?
The purpose of this public hearing is to discuss and.
Adopt.
If you have changes, make the changes, and if you choose to adopt, adopt.
If you do not choose to adopt, do you have to start the public hearing process all over again?
Continue the public hearing.
You could continue it and do it at a public meeting.
No, it's always gonna be at a public hearing.
But you'd only need a public hearing on that little.
But you don't, to continue this public hearing, there's not, all you do is continue it to a time and date certain, and it gets, that next time we meet at that time and date certain is a public hearing?
I, I would prefer.
But it doesn't have to be noticed in a paper.
No, it's continued.
It does not.
It does not.
So I would prefer to do that than to split it.
Okay, so, you amend, I would like to amend yours to, to continue it to the seventeenth.
Uh, uh, just to make it simple, I'll go ahead and withdraw my motion, and we can make an alternative.
Continue it to the seventeenth, Glenn, Glenn has. Nineteenth, whatever it is, yeah.
And, and I'll second that.
Seventeenth of what month?
Nineteenth, December, our next meeting.
Okay, so the motion on the table is to continue the hearing on the vision chapter to December nineteenth.
Pending his.
No, second.
Clarification, not correction, clarification. Is that okay? Does that give you enough time?
Yeah.
Okay. All in favor? Aye.
Liz did, and I seconded it.
Any, is that aye, sorry?
Aye.
Aye, all the ayes, okay. Okay, turn, we got one, it's gonna be one for three.
We, it's okay, we almost approved it, we'll prove it next time.
Yeah, you're very close.
It's all good.
And now for the interesting.
We're moving along, and I'll make a motion to continue.
This just, this just needs, it just needs a lot of work.
I move that we.
And this cannot go to December nineteenth.
It can't?
You need more time.
I cannot do this.
So can you just talk a little bit about what you'll do, what you're proposing that needs to happen to?
So I'm, I, I'm, I'm, I love the first, I love the first section, the demographics is, is excellent, I hate the, the, this first table, this population projection thing. Well, this is just ridiculous, why, why are they including communities like Plastow and Sandown?
Because they're near us.
No, they're not, and, and, oh, if that's the context, why don't they have Exeter, that actually borders one, twenty-five percent of our community?
Are these the other towns that had a grant that they?
I have no idea, I have no idea, but if you're doing, if you're doing population projection, and I think that's a wonderful thing to do. In every chapter I've ever done in my life, I've always done the communities that abut the community you're talking about. So to not have Exeter, who also happens to be in our school district, and so it's something we're connected to, but includes Sandown, that's barely in our county?
I, I think it's the towns that they worked on, but, but it's also so much bigger.
Okay, can we just cut it?
Well, well, just to clarify, um, Christian, um, some of those towns were not HOP communities, is that what you're referring to, or?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, not, I.
So they're random.
Yeah, some of them are not HOP communities.
So, here, the other thing is, with this data, with any of this American, you know, community survey data that they put out every year, every five years. It's, they're just taking percentages, they're just doing stuff across the board.
Correct.
No one sat down and really tried to project Brentwood's population based on the number of building permits or anything like that, so. It's not, exactly, so I'm fine with taking this out and just describing what might happen in Brentwood, because it's pretty shaky data anyways.
Taking which part out?
I.
The population projection.
The line graph.
These other communities.
So the Brentwood projection still doesn't get us to five thousand, which several select board members say we have a, already. It's a pet peeve of mine that several, at least two of the select board members say we have five thousand people in town.
Um, I, can we just cut that and not worry about it? I guess I'm concerned that if it requires a complete overhaul, this will take a very long time and it will never get done.
No, it, no, we need this done before we can adopt anything from phase two. So this has to get done within the next three months.
So can we get it done?
No, I want it done in like the next one month, so I'm trying to limit the places where you're gonna have to.
Where we're gonna have to do work, I mean.
Do too much work.
I'm happy to, I'm happy to pull that out.
The graph, yeah.
And have just a description of the population projections anticipated for the town of Brent.
I think that's fine.
What else?
That's fine.
Next few things, so there's basic data.
Yeah, those are fine.
And then it's like the, um, regional data, and the workforce housing law.
Also fine.
So it's really starting on page six.
Yeah, the, it, it is, it's, it is very common to have environmental constraint sections that, in a housing chapter, but they have to be contextualized. You have to describe why they have some impact on housing, or why the hell are they in the housing chapter?
Sorry, can we go back to page four really quickly? So it talks about the changes, but it doesn't say what the, they are. So like median household income changed by this and this, oh, no, wait, yes, it is, it's up higher, I see.
Can I just suggest that we table this until the nineteenth, does that give you of January?
Well, I just wanted to get a better idea of what.
Yeah, I, I think that that's, that's a wonderful idea. So, I'm not, I'm not saying that I want to delete this, I'm saying I wanna contextualize it.
I understand, but I don't want to give you three months to do it.
That's okay.
I'm, I'm saying January, whatever the third, fifth is close.
So I'm trying to figure out how much you can realistically get done before the nineteenth.
Before the nineteenth of?
January.
January?
January.
If yours.
December, no, 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 December's gonna be the other one.
Nothing, because if I'm going to do these two chapters, and I have a public hearing for the nineteen. Nothing, because if I'm going to do these two chapters and I have a public hearing for the nineteenth where I'm going to be responding to the application for scenic roads, I'm
I already have that from you.
I, oh, did I really?
Yeah, cause it was supposed to be tonight.
And I unfortunately got that from you before I had you do this, and I shouldn't have done that, I apologize.
Well, don't apologize. Um, I, I am not going to do the corrections on three chapters and this on December nineteenth.
Can you do just this?
Just this?
Yep.
Why?
Because the corrections that are needed there could probably be done by some subset of this group, but we can't do that one. I don't know, I mean
The vision one is almost done, we already passed that, right?
I'm, I am perfectly okay, I can want to do those.
Right, like
And I, and then, then yes, I will commit to
But we have a list of the things that you'd wanna change and we talked about that.
The transportation though, we're doing next time, we said, and then I'm
No, vision we're doing next time.
I thought vision
Transportation we adopted
Oh, we adopted, so the, right.
Right. So we don't have to necessarily do those before the
So the vision
Cause we adopted it with changes, when they happened.
And the vision one we set for the
What's the, sorry, what's the, I, I agree, I don't wanna wait three months, but why not give them till Janu- till the first meeting in January to do housing?
That's the fifth though, that's
Or the second meeting in January to do
That's the one, that's the one I'm
Thank, thank you, I am, I'm like, I do not remember having done that, but if you, if you're telling me that you have it, I can't argue with you, but I don't think I did it. Thank you.
All right.
I would like to give Glenn till January nineteenth to Is that the housing one?
January, no?
Is it January nineteenth?
You don't have that up there.
Yeah, let me
Thursday, eighteen, sorry, January eighteenth, whatever, what is it, the Thursday?
The eighteen.
The sixteen.
Oh, I'm looking in the wrong, I'm on the wrong year.
It'll be, it'll be the sixteen.
Let's focus here for a second. Let's go back to what actually needs to be done.
Yes.
So on pages six, seven, eight, are these things, nine, are these things that you need to do research on or that you need to sit down with some focus time to describe better?
Yes, that, that's all I have to do for pages six, seven, and eight, oh really, and nine. What we don't have here is the discussions that we need to have in here about what we are hoping to change with the phase two, looking at our, um, the, the different problem areas in our present ordinance. And we wanna have discussions about that. We wanna have discussions about how we want to add, um, perhaps multi-use along one twenty-five.
Cause I think we, I think it's in here, but not
It really isn't.
But it, only in the goals, not described.
And it needs to be in, I don't know, I don't know when whoever did this thought that the concepts can only be addressed in the goal section, that you can bring them up and then come up with an answer in the goal section without talking about them in the body of the, the chapter. That makes no sense. That's not what a, a goal in the summary is.
Which one?
Where we talk about, um, expanding the opportunity from, for mixed use.
Part of the missing link here is the land use audit was, you know, we should be able to refer to mo- that more, but it is also lacking. Um, cause it really should be incorporated, I think, in this chapter.
Can you explain?
So if you look at that back page
Yeah.
We're, we're looking at having, um, goals and actions associated with things that we don't discuss in the chapter at all.
Oh, which one specifically?
We don't talk about the accessory dwelling unit ordinance at all, in whether or not you wanna consider detached structures or is there a benefit to that, or we don't talk about multi-use.
And there's nothing about that underneath of the, the other tables, am I guessing?
No, no.
No, no, but like in, I wasn't sure if in the housing unit one, there was something about multi, multifamily or with
No.
You or, no, okay.
So we need to do some homework too about, on those discussions, multi-use accessory dwelling. Before we come back.
A lot of, it should be in the land use audit if we have the land use.
Okay, could you explain the land use audit to me?
That was something that the RPC did for us as well, um, and went, remember they had like a toolbox? And it had things like ADUs and mixed use and talked about each one. And then we, and then
For the survey.
The survey and the survey findings, which we have a summary of, which could be attached to this.
Or at least described.
Or at least described.
Okay.
Yes.
Is that still up somewhere more, like to Okay.
A copy of it from April is in the land use file, but, um, it is not. It is lacking.
So I, I would love to say that I can get it done by the first meeting in January, but I'm not sure that I can.
Okay, second meeting?
Second meeting.
Okay. Can that include going back to that land use audit and picking out
Yeah, I'll go back to the land use audit and the survey, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, th- those are resources that should be adequately, adequately reflected here. And, and this, this chapter should go to our consultant
Yes.
Um, for phase two. It isn't something that we can not get done because Steve needs it.
Yeah, I think I sent him the survey summary, but, um, the grant proposal might have some of, you might be able to pull some stuff out of that, cause I tried to write
Yep, I remember, there, there, there were, you did point by point what we'd hoped to accomplish.
Right, so that, that's right, there was a section on the zoning areas that we wanted to address and why.
Yep.
Um, so i- if it's appropriate at this time, I would, uh, make a motion to continue the, um, the hearing on the housing chapter to January sixteenth.
Second.
No, no, January sixteenth is fine. January sixteenth is fine. And if I can get it done before then, I'll get it done before then.
The next week, push it off till February sixth.
It does?
Yeah, the first and third Thursdays, January sixteenth. Then it hops over to the next month.
Yeah, well, that, that's, there's, we, we need this for Steve and Steve needs to, he's gonna wanna get working as soon as he can. So that's the real time constraint.
Okay.
So we have a motion?
Uh, all in favor of continuing the hearing for the housing chapter to January
Already second.
Okay.
It's okay.
I.
I.
Okay. All right, well, we made some progress.
No, that was a lot of progress, yeah, that was some progress.
Uh, we promise we'll read it very carefully before we get to that point, so
There's, there's a lot of, that was a lot of progress.
All right. So between the survey, the land use audit and the grant proposal, you should have the information you need to do that, okay.
And the, and we've had a lot of good discussions that I've listened to
Yeah.
Over the last year.
Why do I have so many of these?
There were, you probably, well, I gave you my two.
Why?
Because you were gonna do those
Oh, that's why, that's why.
Yeah, she's just gonna give those back.
No, do, do you have the, where's the, where's the, um
Mark has, Mark has, Mark, you can give her the word.
Oh, continue, nevermind.
Yeah.
Continue.
Thank you.
You're really, you're gonna do those?
I mean
If you have any questions, you know where I am. I'm gonna be here on Wednesday.
Do. But wait, I don't need this housing one, cause you're gonna do that one.
I'm gonna do, I'm gonna do the housing one.
Okay.
Except I have my housing one, so isn't this your?
What else we got?
I don't know any, I don't know any more. Great.
Thank you Glenn, as always, for all your hard work.
They, there was a lot of, they did a lot of work on these, we did. They did a lot of work on these.
We got it.
And then I think that they wanted us to give input and then we didn't give input. And then they wanted to end the project and they ended the project.
I think we did get input that we never saw
Well, I, I was very concerned that they hadn't incorporated the changes I had given them on the transportation and they did about fifty percent of them. So they, they took my document and they did make changes.
Well, I took the one, like, transportation chapter that had my co- my comments and Steph's comments and made those changes.
Oh, you did?
So
Might have incorporated some of the
I re- I rewrote, that's why I feel extra bad, cause I actually put a lot of time into cleaning them up from where they were. That's how not done they were. So I'm sad and Mark's angry. And now we have good news, everyone. Um, we were awarded a grant for sixty-four thousand dollars for the next phase of the Housing Opportunity Planning Grant Program. Um, so thank you, everyone, for working on this. So the first phase was, um, the survey and, you know, public education and some public engagement housing chapter, land use audit. Um, and with the issues that we identified there, we applied for this next round of grants to actually have somebody help us solve some of those problems and rewrite some things and go into things a little bit deeper. So we've engaged a different consultant. Um, he will send us a contract and we'll get started in January.
He has to be excited about that news as well.
He is, I think he knew before I did.
Probably.
So who's the consultant?
Um, Steve, um
Good old Stevie. It's Re- Resilience?
Whitman, Steve Whitman.
Design?
Yeah, Resilient Design, I think. And he's, he's been a, he's a, he's a really good land use planner, been around there for, been around for a long time.
Cool. And he has a sub consultant who specializes in the workforce housing.
And, and I will say
You'll really break up.
As part of my work at New Hampshire Housing, we were putting together case studies of communities that had a lot of success, um, with, um, amending zoning ordinances and building community contents and, um, a couple of the case studies were Steve, Steve Whitman and Resilience.
He's, he's really good, he's really good, you'll like him. You'll like him.
So I will, um, follow up with him to get that contract going and a schedule. We had a rough schedule in the proposal for when we would do some, you know, like a kickoff and some more public engagement. Um, but
But we, he does need that housing chapter from the get-go, so
Yeah.
It, we're, it just, it has to get done.
Yep, yep.
I'm glad we're not looking at five applications.
Yeah.
I'm glad, I'm glad that that is not our present existence.
Um, and about, yeah, four thousand dollars of that will, um, come to the town to cover administrative costs and the remainder for the, um, consultant. And then this also includes, uh, the housing, um, how do you call it, academy. And I don't remember who
Housing Academy?
Yeah, um, I can, do you wanna explain it or?
No, go ahead, I just don't remember whose names we put down.
Yeah, so Housing Academy, uh, there's sometimes a little bit of confusion about what it is, cause, um, some, so as part of like the grant program, um, people from town, planning board members, um, interested citizens, select board members can all uh, go through Housing Academy. A lot of people go into it thinking that it's about, that it's more about like different types of housing and housing policy and zoning and things like that, but typically the Housing Academy is more about the community outreach piece. How to effectively engage members of the public in the, in the process before town meeting. Um, so some of the things that, you know, we ta- I, I've done one of the Housing Academies and some of the things that we talked about are creative ways to get folks involved, um, for instance, having meetings outside of here in town hall, doing like, you know, um, you know, get coffee and donuts with your select board and we go to like Heavenly Donuts or something and have like, uh, you know, like a office hour, you know, so the, things like that that are a little more, that are creative to get out in the community and meet folks where they're at, engaging churches, um, uh, PTA groups, things like that. So that's more what Housing Academy is, is, is kinda getting these leaders together to talk about effective community engagement strategies to, to get good solutions and also make sure that the community is bought in and comfortable with what we're doing.
All right, um, and I don't know, did I sign, you know, if I signed this last time or if Mark, do you remember if I signed this or if somebody from the town signs it?
I think you signed it.
The, this one.
I think, I think that's you.
Okay.
I think I did.
So I think we vote to, right, to
Yes, and authorize you to sign it.
Authorize me to sign this?
Is this the contract?
Yes.
Okay.
So, well, explain to me what the, I'm, I'm not quite understanding what the consultant will do.
They are going to work on actually rewriting some of our ordinances. So for example, the multifamily zone, we've looked at that before and figured, you know
It's not working.
It's not working. Um, and we lack a workforce ordinance, either a specific one or changes to our ordinances that would conform with the law. So the consultant's gonna help us do that.
Do we have a workforce housing ordinance?
No.
We do not.
We did.
We did.
repealed it after one year.
And it got repealed.
Okay.
For the same reason the fifty-five plus one got repealed, because people were upset about a very specific development.
And we don't, we don't have to have one named that, but we have to conform with the law that we, there are reasonable opportunities for workforce housing development. The easiest way to show that you conform with the law is to have an ordinance specifically for that. So we can decide
What tack we'll take.
Which, which way to go.
And, and from other communities that, uh, that I've talked to, the consultants are really, especially Steve, they, they're really, really good at crafting the ordinances in a way that really incorporates the community feedback a- and, you know, to y- y- you know, get as, as broad support as possible, so that they're, they're really, really very effective at that, at least from what I've seen.
Yeah, good.
So does the law actually take into consideration the situation, I mean, if you're out west, that could be, uh, twelve thousand acres
Well, it's just a New Hampshire, it's, it's a New Hampshire law, so
It's a New Hampshire law.
Yeah, so, I mean, I, you'd have to argue in front of a judge if somebody challenged us on it and we would say, well, you know, we don't have water and sewer and we have X, Y, and Z available.
We're more overdeveloped already. In other towns or like Exeter's, you couldn't, I wouldn't think they could build anything more over there.
Sure they could.
Well, I don't think a lot of people would think we're overdeveloped.
Of course they can.
We're going to.
Where, and they, and they do every single year?
That lot by the school that is a garage now, they're putting in like six condos or something.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Where?
Uh
Oh, it's not by the s- school, it's across the street from the Walgreens.
No, 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 that's not what I'm talking about.
That's another one.
I'm talking about, um, uh
You're talking next
Lincoln Street?
Lincoln, no, the other one.
Main Street.
Main Street School, right before Main Street School, if you're coming from Brentwood, on the right, there's a gr- there's like a garage.
It's an old mobile station, yeah.
They are putting in like six units.
They're also putting the same thing next to, next to, uh, two buildings, three units each, next to the Hampton Inn, you know, in that empty lot. I don't think it was anything, it was a house that was there for a long time.
That reminds me of the new legislation that's going to be passed about parking and being able to use alternate parking in your parking calculation. I meant to talk to you about that.
Oh, that sounds like a big
That's what, what it's gonna bring about, there, cause there's limited parking on that corner lot and I think that's gonna, a big conversation that's gonna happen about parking calculations and being able to use alternate parking within your parking calculation.
Like street, like street parking, that's what else?
Yeah, yeah, yes, right. There's multitude of, of alternate.
Yeah, yeah, that, that, that's, that's, that's a really, that's something that they've had a lot of success with in, um, one of the cities, I don't remember if it's Do- if it was Dover maybe, but they did something like that with new projects where like if there's adequate street parking, you can factor that into the
Right, and, and that calculation went down to like one point five parking spaces per unit?
Pretty high.
We'll, we'll, we'll talk about it later, but I, I thought it'd be an interesting topic at some point.
So if you also have very, very expensive housing like we do in Brentwood, I was just looking at the newest newsletter, the, the things that are selling, what they're selling for. I'm just wondering, um, how that works with workforce housing.
The calculation of, the calculation of workforce housing is a calculation based on the median income of your area. That calculation for Brentwood, I believe, works out to be about four hundred and twenty-five thousand? Glenn?
I think it's four hundred and nine.
Four hundred and nine? Four hundred and nine, four hundred and nine thousand.
That's what they're saying.
And that's what's considered workforce, it's four hundred and nine thousand.
Yep.
Absolutely, Mark.
Four hundred and seven. I was off my two thousand.
This is pretty close, Glenn.
Shoot me.
How much is it?
You should, you, the look, the look on Letty's face was disappointment that I said four oh nine and it was four oh seven.
I need a gavel. Gavel, gavel.
I need to be fair.
All right, Doug.
So, um, i- if the time's appropriate, I would, I would make a motion to, um, authorize Kristen to sign, uh, the, the hot contract.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Please.
Uh, no.
All in favor?
I.
I.
I. Okay, thank you, Doug. All right, um. Meeting minutes, any issues? Or do we have?
Where are the minutes? They're not here. Are they here?
Yeah. Eight four, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
I, we, we didn't sit last time, Brian.
Changes a little bit.
No, yeah.
It's three twenty.
Yeah, we had a full, uh, we had a full ward last time.
We're gonna get eighty percent, hundred percent is four oh seven.
But, but, you're not saying if you were here.
Median household.
I was just saying, yeah, we're here, we hear everything everybody else hears.
Yes.
This is also, um. The beginning is, uh, isn't my neighbor, so.
But you're doing better than I am.
Doug.
Um, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from, um, December fifth, or is that, no, 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 December.
December fifth. Or, or Mark is like laser speed.
Yes, no, um, from, uh, I moved to approve the minutes from November twenty-first.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
He's quick, he's not that quick.
Thank you. Steph's second.
Oh, sorry.
All in favor?
I.
I abstain.
Abstain.
I wasn't there.
It's still read though.
Wait, so do we have?
I don't know what they say.
I don't know if it's right.
You had enough.
Okay, did you get that? Mm-hmm. All right. Minutes, um.
Zerod list.
I abstain too.
I abstain.
Zerod list.
It's my neighbor.
Uh, grant writer for the town of Brentwood, would the planning board like to schedule a meeting with her to have a grant discussion? Um, maybe a little bit later in the spring when we?
Yes, that, that, uh, I'm. Sorry, I'm, I'm multitasking and not well. Uh, I met Nancy, extremely nice, she appreciates you, you, the, um, the grants, opportunities that we, that you sent her, that you did and I sent her. Um, I'd really like to get the two of you together, I think you'd be like the grant writing powerhouse of Brentwood.
You're being set up.
She was super interested in meeting with you after the holiday season and I just wanted to gauge your interest in that.
I'd certainly be interested.
Mm-hmm. Would you like to touch base, uh, later and try to bring it up as a subject so I can lock down a date?
Or we can just pick a date a little further out, like in February?
Mm-hmm.
I'd like to have something, so we've, we've got the, um, infrastructure, transportation. I'd like to, you know, maybe give her some topics.
Mm-hmm.
Explain a little bit about what we're trying to do, maybe have some chapters she can look at, the goals at least.
How about the second meeting in February, does that work? Unless that's, that's not vacation for the schools, right? Oh, she's older anyway, so I won't affect her.
No, it's, that's usually the fourth week, isn't it?
Yeah, third or fourth.
But if you wanna meet with her before and talk specifically about the ones that you've already done.
Yeah, does she work like part-time or?
Yes, she works at the town of Brentwood part-time.
I think I have her email from emails.
Her email address is grants@brentwoodnh.gov.
Yeah, I can.
Well, that's good, I like that.
Sure, I mean, I can meet with her just to talk about these specific grants and get her thoughts and we can plan to separately meet with her as a board and like Kristen mentioned, when our goals are a little more solidified, talk about those too, cause there may be other grants or channel or focus a little bit, but I can have a preliminary convo with her.
Um, sign the Mylar, I did, does anybody else need to sign the Mylar?
Less people that's mentioned.
Okay.
Less subjects.
Um. Do you wanna talk about the zoning thing or, or we can talk about it next time or the, um, noticing?
Oh, yes. And, and, and I have the minority report if you wanna refer to that.
Awesome, uh, this morning I had a meeting with, uh, Melissa and Eric about the noticing requirements and the noticing changes. You'll notice in your packet that there's House Bill ten eighty-six that was to change the zoning ordinances for, I mean, the ZBA noticing requirements and it failed. Uh, and that was this year.
Why? Uh, I, I can speak to that a little bit, so.
Yeah.
Um, I, um, uh, unless I didn't wanna interrupt.
Oh, go for it, no, please do.
So, so I, I pulled up the minority report from the House calendar, so ju- just to give, uh, just in case of any folks aren't familiar, so when, when a bill is considered by a committee, there's of course a public hearing process and then when they vote on the bill, um, typically, um, they'll vote either, um, ought to pass, that the, they recommend that the bill, uh, passes the House in expedient to legislate, which is where they recommend that the House kills, um, the bill. Uh, yeah, um, and then there are some other motions they could do, they can refer to interim study, um, they can retain it in committee for next year. So you, you, I think you get the idea, but in any event, so for, um, House Bill, uh, ten eighty-six, which was relative to public noticing for ZBAs, um, it was, um, a thirteen to six vote, it was bipartisan, uh, thirteen to six to kill the bill. Um, and so the majority report, so the majority of the committee, uh, explaining their rationale, um, said that, um, so, uh, so I won't read the whole thing, but just some important points. Um, quotes, um, "The bill as written while well-intentioned unfortunately presents a number of serious concerns. First, in an effort to provide checks and balances, a government entity should be, uh, not be permitted by law to become the exclusive publisher of its public notices. Second, uh, public notices must be broadly accessible to the public as not all residents have internet access or possess digital literacy, um, furthermore, not all municipal websites are ADA compliance. Um, unquestionably, the elimination of the publication of such notices by newspaper, um, uh, in print and our digital form reduces accessibility of such, uh, information for residents. Um, and, um, also the preservation and archival of the record of the public notice, um, uh, is needed and municipal websites do not have such a record according to them. Um, and then, uh, finally, um, it is important to note that at present, there's nothing preventing municipalities with municipal website from posting public notice of a ZBA hearing on their website in addition to the publication in a print newspaper, end quotes. And then the minority reports of these were the folks who, um, uh, wanted the bill to still go forward, uh, said, quote, "This bill adds a new subsection, uh, to allow municipalities to post zoning board, public hearings, uh, public hearing appeal notices on the town website instead of in a newspaper or general circulation. If a min- a municipality chooses to post the appeal on their website, they may not, they may do so not less than five days before the date of the, of their hearing, uh, so on and so forth. The minority of the committee, uh, believes that this bill will significantly reduce operating budget expenses for planning and zoning postings while increasing the likelihood of abutters and residents seeing the public hearing notices. All but five municipalities in New Hampshire have town websites," end quotes.
But how many don't have newspapers?
That, yeah.
That's the problem, there's not any newspapers.
Well, because they've all gone digital, so they're saying you can't use your website, but you see coast online.
Yeah.
A- a- and.
Well, that's absurd.
A- a- and, and then a lot of those, a lot of those digital newspapers have a paywall.
Exactly.
So, yeah.
They all have a paywall.
Yeah, pretty much.
I mean, you have to go to physically get the union leader.
Yeah.
The Seacoast Online.
You have to subscribe to it.
You have to pay for it.
That's a paywall.
You have to pay for it.
You have to pay for it.
I mean, this is.
That's crazy.
These must be.
I found it. Those thirteen people that were in opposition are clueless.
Well, or they're in places that have newspapers, yeah.
That might be, yeah, cause.
For where?
But doesn't have to be posted two places?
But not here.
Not here.
Well, there was until February of this year.
I wonder if you rewrote it to say if.
Carrotstown is dead.
But that was also a little sporadic.
If there is no free paper available to residents in your community, then the town can do that.
It doesn't make any sense because the planning board one, which is exactly the same process. Passed. 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 It is law. I know, but it's interesting to me and, and our meeting was a, a wonderful, productive meeting with great conversation that you can have two different committees ruling on al- almost the identical same thing and come up with two totally different philosophies about it. Yep. It's legislating, and this isn't the first time, I believe it was tried, it was put into a House bill in two thousand twenty-two and failed as well.
I, I think it needs to be made known that there's not newspapers around for a lot of. That more people have internet access than have.
I don't know who goes to the back page of the union leader.
But you have to go get it.
So.
There must be the newspaper lobby.
So Eric is researching it to find out.
Yeah, I mean, we're, what the, really where it comes down to is that he doesn't wanna get involved in something that has zero chance of passing. Like he wanted to read why, uh, the planning board one passed, what was the majority and minority report?
Yeah.
On that particular one and what did they say about it?
So the noticing by the planning board, that's, that's just you guys, that's not, that wasn't the legislature.
No, it was the legislature.
They changed the RSA.
Legislature changed the RSA to allow planning boards to use websites instead of.
And what was the other?
This is for zoning, which isn't, which isn't our concern, except that Mark has to deal with it and it made total sense and.
Right, it isn't our concern, we don't care, Mark.
We don't care, but we support you.
We're really happy that you're there doing it, just follow the law, use the newspaper. I'm so sorry, I put that in your packet. You will never hear about it again, ever?
We, we support you.
We support you.
Obviously not.
I support you.
But we really support you at the planning board.
That's right. I thought it was interesting, we started on this journey together and obviously I'm continuing by myself.
We'll stay.
You stay here, you guys, everybody turn back. Go back to the boat. Go back to the boat, I'm carrying on myself, thank you.
Are we done?
Um, I have two questions for Glenn, which I think I know the answer to, but one is, have you heard anything back from the attorney regarding the, um?
On your way, no.
Um.
That was with the, like the divots and, and stuff.
The, I can't think of the culverts, that's the word, I'm like drawing them.
I'm glad you didn't use divots, cause it sounded silly coming from you. It sounded really silly coming from you.
Anyway, um, and. T E C, road regulations, we need a contract, we need it now.
Yes, and he did promise it to me, so I will, I will.
Okay, Mark said, uh, he's got his cell phone number, so if you don't have it by.
Yeah, just, just remind him that.
Just call him on Monday and say, we need, we need that.
We asked for it.
If we don't have it by the next meeting, then.
Goes away, he, he doesn't want that either, so.
Yeah, it's.
Uh, road, road ordinances, road. Um, it was.
Standards?
It was the road standards, review contract.
Need now.
Yes.
Okay, uh, any other business?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
I.
I.
It is, eight o'clock right in the nose.
Is it? It's eight fifty.
Oh, yeah, right. You know.
Sure, I checked out already.
We started seven, not six, so I think we did good, Doug, we'll just keep on.